Planning Board, it is Monday, September 8th at 7:05 PM.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Can you hit record?
Oh, yeah. I want to do that on this. Record.
Recording in progress.
All right. All right, again, I'll repeat it. It is Monday, September 8th, 2025. The Warren Planning Board, we started at 7:05 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel WCAT, on Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. And can we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Is there a pen? All right, A and Rs?
So, yes, we have the 1102 East Road A and R. That was canceled for the last meeting, but didn't make it in time for the agenda for this meeting, but.
Okay. Go ahead. Yeah, put the plans there and.
Jeremy Crowe, DC Engineering, representing the owner. Basically, they have three parcels of land. We're just reconfiguring them.
Okay.
Right now, one of the frontages doesn't meet the frontage requirement.
Okay.
So, we're just reconfiguring the three lots and the three.
All right.
So, this is pretty much all the way down. Sorry, you go.
Yep.
Sorry, you go. So, this would have the existing house right now.
So, this is the old lot right here?
That's the old lot, right. And this one's right here.
Okay.
So, this one had excess frontage, so we've got to rearrange them to. Make them open farm. 150 frontage. 45,000. So, this one adds a little more frontage, just to drive away.
So, you sure you got the 150 there? You don't need to squeak that a couple feet over to make sure, as long as you've got it measured up good?
Yeah.
I didn't see any problems with it?
No.
Maybe this one a little bigger?
Yeah, that one got a little larger. A little bigger backyard and a little less.
Oh, is this the old Christmas?
Yes.
Farm? Yeah, that's what I was saying. Yeah, the heberds. Yeah.
So, we could saw Christmas trees back here, and then there's some over there.
Right, right.
And they still give out a right away back into.
Yeah, yep. Very good. Okay. So, we just need a motion to endorse the.
I brought two different ones for the different sizes this time. Figured I'd.
So, I'll make a motion that we endorse the A and R for, is it 11?
O2.
O2 East Road, or second.
Second.
All in favor, break that line. Richi Hocker, I, motion carries. Do you need the thick for this one?
No.
Thing for the liner. It's the eighth, right?
Yes.
Yes. I was gonna say, these ones can go on the ends because they are their own dedicated sizes.
No, I'm good.
Oh, I think you only need more. I usually make more.
Okay, Derek probably couldn't even hear what we were saying, so.
I heard everything.
Did you vote, or did you sort of abstain?
I kind of like abstain.
Okay, all right, then this is good, because there's three of us, so. Yeah.
That way, the client doesn't have to leave the plans there.
Yeah.
Be all set.
Okay.
Yep, we keep three papers.
Turn you up a little bit.
Get the Mylar.
You're perfect.
Anything beyond three.
Yeah.
Yeah. No need to adjust. It does follow you.
Yeah, I'm just turning up your volume so we can hear you better.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good one.
Thanks, okay, thank you. All right, number four, discuss Planning Board member job description. Any comments?
Well, it says meetings every Monday at 7:00. I think it's every other Monday. I think it's, shouldn't it say every second and fourth Monday?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I.
Except if it means, I guess I'll just stay that way.
Yeah, that's because that's.
Because, I mean, sometimes we do have to change it. Because the.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes.
What if you just say you meet twice a month?
No, I'd keep it on the second and the fourth, just so people.
Okay.
Because if somebody has a conflict, or not.
Could I make a suggestion that we say the board meets twice a month currently on the second and fourth Mondays of the month? Because that could change in the future, and that way you're not, you're not, you know, if, so if something, someone comes on board and three months from now, there's a good reason to change it.
To the first and the third.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
That covers both of the.
Okay.
That covers both. It might be redundant.
Yeah, very good, right?
But it's clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, we meet twice a month currently on the second, on the whatever.
Second and fourth Monday of each month.
Yeah.
Yeah, second and fourth Monday, sorry.
You have other comments?
I do. I liked the template, the draft that Sherry had.
Yes, Laura.
I'm sorry.
The original sort of blurb that I drafted up is on the backside of this page, and Derek's edit is on the front.
So, is it, so are we including both of those?
So, you have both of them in front of you for consideration, however you all would like to proceed. You got both options.
Because it might be good to put the number of elected.
Yeah, I did have a, I had an addendum to your draft. Laura, sorry. That just, again, the idea, whether the words are used or not, but the idea that Planning Board members are normally elected to a five-year term. Whoever's volunteering should probably know that. If they don't.
Good idea.
Currently, currently, a seat is open due to resignation and would be filled until the next election in May of 2026. Now, that's a specific job description to be posted. Obviously, it would, you may not want to put that in there, but, so someone who's going to volunteer, you don't need to include that.
No.
But obviously, that would be communicated to whoever showed some interest.
Yeah, because if we're trying to make this generic, then that's not going to work. But I like the five. We should do five-year term, so they know.
So, on the very first sentence of the original draft.
Yeah.
It said, "The Warren Planning Board, consisting of five elected members," you could say, "consisting of five members elected to five-year terms." That might be a little.
Yeah.
Ambiguous, but you could include the five-year term in that sentence. I just don't know how to wordsmith it well.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, have a question?
Yeah.
More in general, why is it five years?
Because there's five members, so you stagger, you know, one new, one new election every year. Sometimes there's like, they'll do two, two, and one, or something like that, but, you know, for whatever reason.
I'm just thinking from the point of view where five years, oh, that's too much.
Yeah, but I'd, yeah, but it's probably better they know about it, so.
No, no, I'm okay with that. I'm just questioning besides the letter.
Oh, just in general.
Concept, in general.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had that thought as well, Derek, and, you know, to me, the criteria for someone to be on the board, or, you know, not that we decide, but for the appointing authorities to decide, obviously, there has to be interest. If they're not interested, you don't want them serving just because there's a hold of bill. They need to have a certain level of competence. We don't, I know, in one thing, it says eligibility, any, in your version, Derek, you said eligibility, "Any resident of the town may apply." Well, that's true, but you need to have some criteria by which you discern that someone is able to actually serve effectively. And I don't know what word to use there, if you want to call it competence, or intelligence, or something like that. I don't want to be, and I'm not suggesting this go in the description. I'm just talking in general right now. But the most important characteristic that you want with someone, you need these three components in any town board, or commission, or committee. You need the interest, you need the competent, and you need someone with integrity. You've got to have all three of those. If they don't have one of those, they should be not, they should not be considered. Now, anyone can apply, but then I think the appointing authority, whatever that is, typically, it's the selectman, should discern all three of those components. Now, that doesn't have to go in a job description because, you know, but I just thought that was important to point that out. And I would really encourage whoever is making those appointments to consider all three of those. You've got to have someone interested. They've got to be able to do the job, and most importantly, they've got to be someone of integrity. Someone of integrity will become, if they're not competent, they will become competent, and they'll also display the requisite amount of interest and service that the job requires. So, I think it is important that someone knows it is a five-year term. Not that you have to fulfill the full five years, but that is what you're signing up for. You're signing up for a five-year term. Now, you know, obviously, we're not going to keep anyone to that, but, you know, they should, if they say that's too much, then my response is, well, thanks for the interest. But, you know, maybe we'll wait for someone who's a little more interested. Well, you know, what are you going to do? Say, well, are you willing to serve for a year? You know, it's like, if someone just wants to fill the open seat and give it a trial run, that's the perfect situation, because then they don't have to run next May for the seat. They're only being appointed for the interim till the election. But anyway, I just wanted to address that. While the eligibility, that's fine to say that any town resident may apply. That doesn't make you eligible just because you're breathing, in my opinion.
Yeah, but it is true, anybody can.
Anybody can apply.
It is a true statement. So, we got to back up a sec, because are we doing this just for the opening? Or are we doing it as like, come run for Planning Board? Because, see, these don't apply, because it's an elected position, so anybody can run, whether they're competent or not.
Yeah, so it was sort of.
A little confused, maybe.
I think the initial idea was to sort of get something consolidated on paper, so that if someone had interest in either filling the current vacancy or running in the future, there would be sort of like a one sheet of like, what is this?
You could email it off and say.
Yes, and say like, oh, you know, I'm thinking about getting more involved in town. What is a planning board like, what is, you know, planning board, what is that? And you can sort of have like a, here you go, like almost like an elevator pitch for a board member.
Right, okay.
And so, I think, you know, certainly, there's, you know, things that could be made more specific, you know, tailored to this specific opening, but, you know.
For this specific opening, maybe it would be an idea to say, it's available for now until the next election.
Yeah, so I'm thinking.
But again, this is, this is a general description for anybody looking to run or be appointed.
So, even if in like, you know, if someone's like, I'm thinking about, you know what? I'm retiring in 2027, and I'm thinking about getting more involved in town, so maybe I'll run in 2028. What's this position all about?
Yeah.
They can have something to reference, but it would still be applicable to the current vacancy.
And, you know, I noticed there was an ad in the paper for ZBA.
I think I also have the question.
There was a little, you know, it was a tiny little ad, but I think we should maybe run an ad.
That was, one of my questions was sort of, how are we advertising the current position? Is there a plan for that?
No, I mean, we've mentioned it at meetings, and I don't know, I think maybe an ad would be good.
Yeah, just on the town website.
How do you reach people who don't, I mean, some people just don't watch these meetings? They could be interested.
Definitely on Warren's page, Warren's Facebook page.
Yeah, but I thought that in the Wair River News wasn't a bad idea. It can't be that expensive. It's a, you know, could you see and?
I was gonna say, I can, I can see what the ZBA ad was, and be like, yeah, similar, let's see.
Yeah. Well, okay, so add it to the Planning Board page. Or even on the front, like the news section?
Yeah, I can ask, I think Griffin has the access to do like a, like a news item on the main page.
Yeah. Desperately seeking.
And I'm not sure if it's Griffin, or Jim, or Select Board, who like, does like the Facebook stuff, but I will, I will do some digging, be like, who's got the?
Oh, talk to Derek.
Okay, Derek, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Griffin can do the, your town's website, and I can push that through social media.
Okay.
But I need, I need something tangible to share.
Yeah.
Like the final, say, the final, you know, verbiage, all the text that needs to be final, ready to go out.
Okay. So, I kind of like the, Derek did the bullets. I think the bullets are good, because it kind of like hones it down.
Yes.
So, a fourth bullet could be, you know, this is an, something about this is an elected position, right? And you serve for five years. Oh. Apparently, Jim is watching this. ZBA was not a paid ad. It was a free press release that Carrie sent into the newspaper.
Oh, free is even better.
Good job, Jim.
Yeah, I can touch base with Carrie and see.
Yeah.
What her process was that, was for that.
Can you say something about the current position is until the next?
Yeah, until the next election. So, I want to clarify, is what Derek's provided like an advertisement that's separate from the general description, or is it all going to be the same thing?
No, I think, I think we need a general description of a Planning Board member.
Okay.
Then we can do a press lease, release that links, you know, has a website, town website that points back to the site, so then they can look at this. That's what I would suggest, because you want to keep it small.
So, this is more of an, the quote, marketing?
No, no.
As opposed to the description?
Nope, this should be the description. One of these should be just the description.
Okay.
Because this is too much for marketing on the newspaper.
Okay. So, we're doing an either/or?
I think we should come up with a member description.
Okay.
Because we can always advertise and put marketing into it, but we need the basic, if you're interested in the Planning Board, elected or appointed, what does that mean? What are you going to be doing? When do you meet? How long do you serve? That sort of thing. Nuts and bolts of this position.
The nuts and bolts are in the original draft we got from Laura.
Okay.
Because that says what you actually do as a Planning Board member.
Okay.
And that is pulled basically directly from the Planning Board description on the webpage, and that goes into the annual town report.
Right.
So, that's sort of that big chunk of language, that first paragraph, is sort of already out there, approved, discussed, all that good stuff.
Okay.
So, that's sort of where I got that, was just, it's already, it's existing language.
Okay. I would, the only thing I would add then probably is a five-year term. Consists of five elected a member, five elected members each serving a five-year term. So, does that sound good? And then we could take Derek's and use it as like a Facebook post kind of thing, if you wanted to do that, right?
Yeah, that's, I could get behind that, because.
Okay.
There's, because Derek's got a lot of good points that are already in the original draft.
Yeah.
But then it embellishes it a little bit with kind of some. Uh, but then it embellishes it a little bit with kind of some, some of those particulars. But a lot of it's, a lot of it's redundant. Uh, the training is redundant, uh, the, the eligibility, Planning Board members must be, the original draft said, "Planning Board members must be residents of Warren." It, it doesn't, you know.
But I think that's okay, cuz this would be separate. This would be up on Facebook, then you link, and then you can
The actual description.
See like the actual description, yeah.
I would agree, and this is easy to read.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's quick and easy.
The bullet kind of thing, like, you, you skim through this really quick, and you're like, yeah, okay, let me look, you know, I'll look more. Cuz we can do like a, for more information at the end of this, right, for more info, go to the, you know, the town website.
I think that's good, because they can refer to the other if they are interested, but this is so synced into the point.
Yeah.
I'm getting a little picky here, but could we strike the word preserving in the fourth line of Derek's?
Oh, preserving, where's that?
Uh, it's in the fourth line.
Oh, Planning Board's responsible shaping the and preserving the character of our town.
Right, it's, you, the, the Planning Board is responsible for reviewing and guiding how land is, I've got an issue with that too, but let me get back, go, um, is used helping shape development and the character of our town. Because it's not our job to
Yeah.
necessarily preserve, because we might not want to preserve it. It, it, or there might be initiatives that, so what, what is the, what, what is the character of our town?
It probably depends on who you talk to.
It depends on who you talk to. So, you definitely wanna shape the development and character of the town, but you may not wanna preserve it, because
Yeah, okay.
The, you know, three years from now, the character of the town may be different than it is today on purpose.
Right.
You know, so, we, we don't necessarily, I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't preserve the character of the town. I'm saying we shouldn't say that that's our role, is to preserve it.
As it is.
As it is, right, because if we-
We might wanna change it.
Cuz we might wanna change it, right. So, if we can just strike the word preserving, then I'm okay.
Okay.
And I, I just, I'm trying to think about, if I was volunteering for this position, do I guide how land within the town is used? We do do that as a Planning Board, and we should do that, but I'm just wondering if the language is really accurate. For example, how I, does that mean I can tell the farmers what crops they can raise? Does that mean I can tell the resident whether or not they can put a addition on their house or garage? So, how the land is being used, does that mean I have to get the Planning Board's permission to call the forester to remove trees from my forested woodlot?
Well, so, I'm thinking the term that's usually used is land use, right?
Okay.
How about just saying guiding land use? Planning Board's responsible for viewing and guiding land use.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, it, it all comes from the code, Massachusetts code. So, when somebody has a, a property, and they wanna change the use, the, the Planning Board is the one who decides if he can change it or not.
Okay, so the Planning Board is responsible for reviewing and, uh,
Approving.
Guiding or approving land use, how about that?
That would be better, because that is the terminology that's used. Someone who's unfamiliar with the, the role, it could read that and say, oh, I don't like it that my neighbor's growing sunflowers, or alfalfa, I'm allergic to it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, land use is different, because you're not changing the use of your land. To, to say how your land is used versus land use, the land use is farming. How it's used is up to the farmer.
Yep.
So, and that mirrors what's on the, uh, like, the Board is special permitting granting, special permit granting authority for land uses that require.
Yeah.
So, then those two mirror a little bit better.
Yeah, that, so it's just a, it's just a technicality to get, get that appropriate verbiage in there.
Okay. Anything else? So, again, this piece is gonna be our little ad for somebody to get appointed, right?
Okay.
We may wanna say instead of volunteer position, we may actually wanna say appointed position, right?
Cuz it will be appointed this time.
And mentioned that it's, uh, through May.
Yeah.
Right? So, that would probably be May twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Right, cuz, yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah, cuz I volunteer.
Yeah.
You could say appointed volunteer position, but that's-
Yeah, no, that's true, though. It's not like they can just walk in and sit down and say, okay, I'm doing it.
I'm here.
Yeah, you gotta, it should be, yes, we're going to appoint you if we find that you're worthy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But to keep, yeah, that notion of volunteering and serving, you could say appointed volunteer position.
Okay.
But it's, it's good, both aspects are useful and good.
Yeah.
Why use a, why use ten words when a hundred does it better?
Yeah.
To clarify a bit.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so let's back up a sec. So, the Planning Board member description that Laura wrote, the only thing we need to do is put five-year term in there, right? And we're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments on that? And then we have a bunch of changes on the sort of ad, right? I can do that, or did you get enough notes? Do you think you could?
I have, I have a bunch of notes. I, I have an English degree. This is just, that's, that's how my brain keeps things on track. So, I can sort of update the, these and send them back out for, for another review. Just get it sort of consolidated and-
And just to be clear, I think we'd want another bullet for elected, this is an elected position for five years, and then a bullet that says through May twenty twenty-six. Right, two more bullets, I think? So, it's clear what we're looking for. Oh, well, this is an elected position. No, no, we don't want that, we don't want that, scratch that.
Because that's later.
Yeah.
That's not now.
That's covered in the actual description.
And we're not looking for that. We're looking through, to appoint somebody through May twenty twenty-six.
Right, right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
Well, that's okay. That's what I was saying, the, the two things are actually a little different.
Yeah, I know.
There, there's, there's convergence, there's redundancy, but they're not identical.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, Laura, have we made it confusing enough for you to, to?
Oh, I'm good.
Sort out, sort out all our ambiguities.
Okay, all right.
And of course, we'll send the draft out again, and we'll all think of nineteen more things to add to it.
Any other questions, comments on that? Derek, are you good?
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so, August twenty, twenty, uh, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes of the Planning Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Ray Capaco, aye.
Drew King, aye.
You're looking at me, sorry.
Richi Hacker, aye. Okay, that passes. Bills and payroll? I need a motion to pay. So, we've got payroll for Laura, we've got-
No bills listed this round.
Okay. So, I just need a motion for payroll.
We'd like to make a motion to pay Laura on the amount of seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and one cent, which covers from pay period August twenty-fourth through September sixth.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Ray Capaco, aye.
Drew King, aye.
You're looking at me, sorry.
Richi Hacker, aye. Motion carries. What do we want?
And I did, the last sort of piece in this packet is I did just include a printout of the, um, we received a message from CMRPC, what came in this morning, um, came in Friday, and, uh, just about, uh, local planning assistance, available resources. So, that was forwarded, an email as well, hard copy available. If you want to discuss, it could slot in under new business, if you'd like to review and discuss later. It's up to you all.
Yeah.
But at least now you, you've got a copy of it regardless.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, basically, by joining CMRPC and paying our dues, we get twelve hours of assistance. And then we can do another twelve if we attend meetings, um, as they've talked about here. And I think occasionally, we've used this time, we haven't really taken advantage of it. Most of the time, anything we do is covered under grants. But I imagine, like, if we really wanted to, we could use an hour for them to review our Planning Board member description, or something like that. Or maybe look at a zoning bylaw or something, you know?
Yes.
Couple hours, hey, what do you think about this?
I'll be happy to follow up with our town administrator to, he must be on top of this, I presume, but-
Yeah, but like I said, we typically don't use this, cuz anything we do through them is already covered under a grant, so
Yeah.
This is kind of like ad hoc stuff that may come up.
Right.
And we only get twelve hours, so it's not like
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna do like a big, huge project, so. Yeah, but you can, Jim may know what-
I'm sure Jim's familiar with it.
Yeah.
I'll see if there's any, if he has any more to say about it, to help us.
Yeah, okay. Any other new business? And old business?
I, I had asked just before the meeting how things are going from, uh, the, uh, conversation we had last week with Kaylee
Oh, yeah.
Uh, for her, um, business proposal over in, uh, is it Hitchcock's?
Uh, Old West Warren. And it's like, I believe it's the corner with Hitchcock.
Yeah, not, um, I forget the street name, the, the side street name, Highland, is it Highland?
Oh, in West Warren.
In West Warren.
Yeah.
And I'll let Laura say what she knows about it.
So, I, I touched base with the Board of Health, um, just to get an update on where that is. Uh, so, the Board had determined that, you know, the cottage kitchen, solely just the cottage kitchen, sort of outside the purview of the Planning Board, good to go, provided Board of Health is good. Um, the stand, uh, the, a proposed sort of roadside sales stand would require a special permit. So, uh, Kaylee spoke with the Board of Health as well, sort of with that knowledge. And so, for now, she is in the application and review process for the cottage kitchen alone. Because the, uh, the, I believe it's the shared services, health inspectors, directors, I'm not entirely sure, the, the health inspectors that are reviewing things for, uh, for the coalition, pointed out that it is, uh, with food code, roadside stand permitting for prepared foods is actually quite intensive. Um, and it's not as straightforward as one might think. There, it's one thing if you are selling a tomato that you grew in your backyard, it's an entirely different animal if you are selling something you cooked or baked.
Cuz now it's sitting outside.
Yes, and now it's a prepared food, and though it may not be, you know, it may not require temperature control, it's still exposed to the elements unless you have all kinds of systems in place. Um, so, for the time being, at least to the last of Board of Health's knowledge, um, Kaylee is moving forward just with the kitchen at this point, and is sort of trying to perhaps make a game plan of whether or not, or how she may be moving forward with a roadside sales stand.
Well, she's gotta have the kitchen no matter what.
Exactly, yeah, so it's like first step, get the kitchen up and running from there.
See what, yeah.
See, you know, see how things for a shakeout.
Okay, all right. So, we don't need to do anything then, right? We're not gonna be involved?
Nope, she was here informally, so if she re, you know, she comes back and she wants to, you know, apply for the special permit, that's sort of when the Planning Board would get involved next. But for now, it's just sort of, she, she chatted with you all, and has a better idea of what would be needed, and now she just has to make her decision.
It's all on Board of Health.
Yep.
Okay. All right, good. All right, comments and concerns?
Nothing, sir, I'm good.
Nothing? Our next meeting date?
Twenty-second, oh, it's like that might be holiday?
No, not the twenty-second, brush, brush, I should have, that's the twenty-third, twenty-fourth. At least according to the Apple Calendar. Okay, so our next meeting is September twenty-second at seven PM. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second, all in favor?
Ray Capaco, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Derek Pennis, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you, Derek.